I've got a couple announcements I've got to read and then we'll go right to, right to the roll call. But Councilman Battle, I appreciate you being here and joining this group. We've got some exciting things we're going to talk about, so I appreciate having you here, sir. For the record, I would like to announce Governor Northam's Amendment 28 to House Bill 29, adopted at the Virginia General Assembly 2020 reconvened veto session, allowing boards to meet virtually during emergency declarations. The amendment provides that a government, that a public body may, may meet by electronic communication without a quorum of the public body or any member of the governing board physically assembled at one location. When the governor, when the governor has declared a state of emergency and the declared emergency makes it impractical or unsafe for the public body to assemble in a single location and that the purpose of the meeting is to discuss or transact business statutorily required or necessary to continue operations of the public body. An emergency declaration was issued on March 17th, 2020, under Governor Northam's executive order 53 due to the coronavirus. As part of the order, temporary restrictions were placed on restaurants, non-essential business, and all public and private in-person gatherings of 10 or more individuals were prohibited. The Portsmouth Redevelopment and Housing Authority Board, Board of Commissioners meeting of April 25th will be a virtual meeting using Microsoft Teams to facilitate the meeting. Secondly, the Portsmouth Redevelopment Housing Authority Board of Commissioners meeting are held on the third Thursday of each month at 5:00 PM, which is just now. All meetings are conducted at PRHA's main office, 3116 South Street, unless otherwise noted. All members of the public are welcome to attend. So with that, thank you very much, commissioners and members of the staff and public that are here. Ms. Marshall, I'm going to pass it to you to call us to order and I'll do the roll call.
Great. Commissioner Barham?
Here.
Commissioner Cos?
Here.
Commissioner Jiggetts?
Here.
Commissioner Prince? Commissioner Wicks?
Here.
Vice Chair Roberts?
Here.
Chair Lalonde?
Thank you very much. Thank you. Yes, I'm here. And we have a quorum, Ms. Marshall? Yes?
Yes.
Yes, thank you very much. Commissioners, you have in front of you, and there were some corrections made to, to one of the minutes there. And now hopefully you've gotten those corrections to the minutes for minutes of March 18th, 2021. I'll look for a motion to accept those minutes of March 18th, 2021.
I'll make a motion to accept the minutes for March 18th, 2021.
All right.
Second.
And I've got a motion, I need a motion to accept the minutes for the special call meeting that we had for the agency plan of March 30th, 2021. I need, I need a motion for that one.
Commissioner Barham, so moved.
All right.
Second.
Thank you very much. Thank you. Ms. Marshall, if you could call a vote for both me, both for both minutes, March 18th and March 30th, please.
Commissioner Barham?
Yes.
Commissioner Cos?
Yes.
Commissioner Jiggetts?
Yes.
Commissioner Prince? Commissioner Wicks?
Yes.
Vice Chair Roberts?
Yes.
Chair Lalonde?
Yes, and thank you very much, and thank you. I want to, sorry, anything? Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am. Just want to start the, I changed the agenda slightly. And again, I appreciate everybody's patience in dealing with me. I want to work in progress, I guess, to see what's going to be the best. I wanted to start it off each meeting by first of all saying thank you very much and thank you for the opportunity to be the chairman of the Portsmouth Redevelopment Authority. It's been a very, very exciting month, in my opinion. I've hit the deck running, hopefully working hard for you and working for the agency. First thing I want to do is, one, thank the, thank the commissioners who met last month on the 30th to accept the agency. Already been approved by the, by HUD, HUD? So, so the diligence that everybody did, the work that everybody did, thank you very much. We've got our five-year plan approved. We had one retirement here at the building. We had two, two, one lady, one gentleman retire. Decades of experience here at PRHA. So we've got a lot of longtime employees. It was an honor to represent the, represent the board at that retirement. Met with the mayor, Mayor Glover, to talk to him about some of the exciting things we're doing here at PRHA and to get his advice on some of the things that we want to do that I'm passing on that Mr. Bland wants us to, wants us to advance. And the two biggest ones were senior housing. We want to see what we can do to partner, work closer with the council on trying to increase the amount of senior housing here in the city of Portsmouth. The second one is use of pilot. Instead of paying real estate taxes, we are the only locale that pays real estate taxes and we'd like the city to entertain the use of pilot on some of our properties. And we talked additionally about communications. We've said that it's been almost two years since we've met with the council and we would love to have a meeting with the council. Councilman Battle, if you could help us with that, sir. We have not met as a body with the council in quite, in a couple of years. And we would like to at least show off about what we're doing here at PRJ with the, with the full body. We also, also asked for also dialogue, joint meetings with EDA and joint meetings with PPIC. So that was the agenda that I left with the mayor that had discussed with the executive director. Met with Dr. Melvin O'Mariner with Grove Baptist. Again, since he's part of a couple of large groups here in the city, to also talk the same things that I talked with the mayor about. And, and also educating him a bit, as Mr. Battle had talked about earlier, some of the things that PRHA does that a lot of the, a lot of the leadership in this city doesn't know. He was pretty much focused that we did public housing and we did the Housing Choice Voucher Program. But he had no idea that we were involved with the Kroger, Kroger Shopping Center that was put here. He had no idea that we were involved with the Walmart Shopping Center that was put here. He had no idea that Parkview Elementary School, we were part of Parkview Elementary School, the Chick-fil-A, the IHOP, a lot of these businesses that are here in Portsmouth. While we do the housing side, the redevelopment side is also a very critical part and a very successful part that this agency has done. Also had the opportunity Rotary of Downtown Portsmouth asked me to speak. So I talked to them about those same challenges that we have and asked for their support. The, I, I, we reached out, reached out to the, the Virginia Pilot representative, Josh Reyes. He had mentioned that he's been invited to the meetings and hopes to join in on us virtually or come to the meetings. Had some dialogue with the executive director of the Norfolk Redevelopment Housing Authority, Mr. Ron Jackson, and we've promised to meet. And I'll get, hopefully I can get, if one of the commissioners could come with me. And Mr. Bland, I'd like to get together with Ron. Ron and I go back when he was the executive director of the Hampton Redevelopment Housing Authority. Mr. Bland has scheduled meetings with us, with the superintendent of schools on Monday. And we've got a meeting with the new city manager on Tuesday. So again, I appreciate the opportunity to, to move out in front and to put the agency out in front, to be able to put, put those things out there that we would like to do in the future with the council and with some of the city leadership. So with that, I'm going to move into the committees. And hopefully the committees have at least had a chance to talk amongst each other and had a chance to talk with the staff. So we've got myself and Vice Chairman Roberts. I heard somebody. Yes, sir.
Commissioner Prince.
Oh, yes, sir. Thank you for joining us, sir.
Just for the record, I wanted to say I was here and it's been a busy week. And to Mr. Bland, your Kung-Fu is strong, sir. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Thank you.
That was an inside comment, but he'll know what I'm talking about.
Yes, I'm sure. Ms. Marshall, if you could make sure that's noted that Mr. Prince is joining us. I appreciate it.
Noted.
Thank you. As I said, back to the committee comments. Myself and Ms. Roberts are on the finance committee. And Vice Chairman Roberts, I'm going to ask if you have any comments to make, ma'am?
I just wanted to, to update the, the Board of Commissioners on the quad, the Quality Assurance Division staff review that was conducted on our financial systems and the reconciliation of a number of accounts having to do with our unrestricted versus restricted funds and ensuring that the Housing Choice Voucher Program funds have been expended and reported appropriately. Shannon has been working on this for a long time. They had to go back to 2017 and just to review every single transaction and how it was posted to the accounts and where it went. And they are almost done. They're very close to the end of this process. It's, it's cleaner and much more accurate than, than it was in the beginning. And so I just wanted to notify you all that she has been working very hard and is almost done with that process. There will be another review. They'll come back in 2022, I believe, or 2023 to take a look at it again and to make sure that the process that she's instituted now continues. Okay? Any questions?
Thanks, 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 Ms. Roberts. And, and also Shannon has also, probably going to have a little bit deeper dive. She's going to provide financials year-to-date next month for us. So we all know where we're at financially here at the agency. Right, the Development Committee, Mr. Barham, Barham and Mr. Ms. Cos, did you have anything to report?
Yes, sir. This is Commissioner Barham. I'd just like to report that we got a really good exchange from Mr. Page recently. He gave a detailed report of the development activities that are ongoing and may come before the board this evening. And I expressed some interest with him to plan an additional, you know, whether it be a virtual meeting or just some exchange there to discuss kind of the top five ongoing initiatives, how they fit into the goals for the year and kind of the strategic plan for, for his operations. So very happy with, with all the work that he's doing. I commend him and ask that he keep up the good work.
Very good. Thank you. Ms. Cos, did you have anything you wanted to add?
I don't.
Okay, thank you, ma'am. Thank you. And the Human Resources Committee, I don't know if y'all had a chance to meet. Ms. Wicks and Commissioner Prince, did y'all have a chance to meet?
If I could speak for Ms. Wicks, we just spoke earlier and we'd like to make a plan to meet with Ed sometime next week, I think we talked about. So if we can do that and get it off the ground, I appreciate it.
All right, sir. Y'all are on the hook for that personnel policy. Just, just kind of keep that on the front burner.
I feel it.
All right, sir. Thank you, sir. Thank you, sir. Thank you. Commissioner Jiggetts and Ms. Cos, y'all are teaming up on the Housing Committee. Did, did, Ms. Commissioner Jiggetts, did you have anything you wanted to report?
Yes, Director Jenkins on the, online, on, on the call.
Yes, I am.
Hi. I'm going to just give a quick overview, but I want you to give the details, okay?
That's fine.
Okay. Director Jenkins and I discussed over the phone and she's going to talk about the opening of the waitlist. She's going to talk about the state of Virginia's, the state Housing Authority's rental payment relief fund. And I gave her some suggestions to advertise the waitlist in the New Journal and Guide and to also look into advertising through public service announcements on the radio concerning the waitlist. And with that, Director Jenkins, would you take it away?
Good evening, everyone. I want to address the rental mortgage payment. And then Ms. Carol Thomas will go over the waitlist because that's pertaining to the Housing Choice Voucher Program.
Right.
So Virginia Housing, which is our state agency, implemented this program, Virginia Rent and Mortgage Relief Program. So what we've done, the management team, we started back in February. Any resident that was delinquent in rent from April to current, we were able to enter their information into a data and supply all the information and hopefully we will be refunded to bring some of these delinquent accounts current. So we're working very hard, making sure we get all the information in. It takes about an hour to enter the information and it's about a 45-day process. So today I was at one of the developments and a resident called and told me that she had been approved and we should receive a payment within two to three business days. So we are excited about that.
That's good.
So we're going to continue to enter the data and just keep moving forward.
And that is delinquent rent from April of 2020. I just wanted to clarify that.
Correct.
Thank you.
And I want to address, I'm sorry, did I cut you off, Ms. Jiggetts?
No, go ahead. I was just going to say about the waitlist.
Okay. And I want to address about the waitlist. We have received some funding in the HCV program that will allow us to assist the non-elderly disabled families who are experiencing homelessness. And this funding can only be used for that specific population. So we have extracted the persons that are currently on our waitlist that would be eligible for this particular funding to receive vouchers through this program. And we decided to go ahead and open the waitlist up to take additional applications because as vouchers are overturned, families give up the voucher or perhaps they no longer need the voucher or whatever. We wanted to have some clients at the ready, some applicants at the ready to receive the vouchers so there would be no hesitation in the funding. We're going, we have advertised or we are advertising this weekend. It's going in the New Journal and Guide as well as in the Virginian Pilot. It's on our website and also we're putting it on our social media sites. The waitlist will be open on Tuesday, April 27th at 8:30 AM and will close on Wednesday, April 28th at 4 o'clock, 2021, for the acceptance of applications for the families that meet this criteria only. And so at the present time, that is the only applications we're going to be accepting is for the non-elderly disabled family members that are homeless. Did you have any questions, Ms. Jiggetts?
Uh, no. Uh, I think that was clear. You said the non-elderly disabled, correct?
Yes, ma'am. It is, it is eight, age 18 through those participants that are not yet 62 years old. They have to be under lease by the time that they're 62 years old, or just before they're 62 years old.
Okay. Well, thank you for that information. I'm so glad to hear that you also have expanded and included the New Journal and Guide in this. And what about the public service announcement? Did you, did you have a chance to look into that?
We don't normally do it over the radio because we put it on the website. And since we're using our social media sites, which is, you know, the technical way that people, most, most people go now, we're not putting it on the radio at this time.
Okay. I would encourage you to still look into it because so many people don't have access to, to the social media in the, in the format. But only as a public service announcement where it would be free to offer the information if you were still just looking toward.
Well, thank you. I'll take that in consideration.
Thank you so much.
You're very welcome.
I'm sorry. This is Commissioner Wicks. Ms. Thomas, you said it opens on the 27th and closes on the 28th?
It opens on the 27th.
The 27th.
On the 28th. So because it's available on our website, it's open continuously from 8:30 AM on the 27th and it will close at 4:00 PM on the 28th.
That is it. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Commissioner Barham, I have a question. Have we ever advertised to this specific or accepted applications to such a specific group before? And then with that, what kind of response do we anticipate this time around?
We have advertised for specific groups on the project base or the housing sector. It's been a while since the Section 8 waitlist has actually been opened. And when we had it last opened, it was just general applications. But this is the first time in a while that we have advertised for a targeted population.
Great. Thank you.
And this is also the first time that we've had the mainstream vouchers as well.
Exactly.
Do, and yeah, just to follow that up, what kind of response do you anticipate? I mean, just quantity-wise?
Thousands.
Yes. That's why we're, for the period, do anticipate thousands. The last time I was, the Section 8 waitlist was open, we took almost 7,000 applications.
Yeah, I do recall that. Yeah. Thank you.
Thank you. I appreciate you giving that detailed information. Commissioner Wicks, was there anything else pertaining to the Housing Choice Voucher? That, I heard you asked a question about when it opened and when it closed, April 27th through April 28th?
Um, no, I think I'm pretty clear with what she said. It's open only to non-elderly disabled families, is correct?
Homeless and homelessness, yeah.
Yeah. Okay.
All right. And the other thing to report out of the Housing Committee, Ms. Cos, did you have any comments?
Well, my only comment, I know with the RRP program that Ms. Jenkins is talking about, the property that I am with now, we have people that have been approved also probably about three weeks ago that we see haven't received payment yet. So it's probably going to take longer than two to three days. So it's going to take a while.
Thank you. And Ms. Cos, Ms. Jiggetts, I want to make sure that there's dialogue between y'all and Mr. Bland on this senior housing that we're going to be talking about with some of these groups. I want to make sure y'all are way out, out in front with us on supporting the senior housing effort that we have. A lot of good conversations going to happen. All right. On the Gov, on the Governance Committee, I've got my, the chair and the vice chair are normally on the Governance Committee. Mr. Bland and Ms. Marshall passed to us the, the bylaws and some of the other regulations that we have. And, and Ms. Roberts and I are, we've got to do a deeper, we've got to do a deep dive and we'll report out, out on those as we, as we look at them. It has been a while, it looks like, some, come a couple of them, it's been a while since they've been reviewed. Not that there needs to be any revisions to them, but they just need to be reviewed. All right? Thank you very much. I really appreciate the committee reports. I think, as you're finding out, as I always have, we've got some great, great directors. We've got some great staff and I really want them to show off on what we've got here at the, here at the, at the complex. All right. Mr. Bland?
Okay. Commissioner, from the last meeting, you asked me to reach out to the Westbury Association. You got two associations in Westbury, the Westbury Civil Association and the Westbury Home Association. I did reach out to Ms. Pam Wilkins. She's president for the Westbury Civil Association. And then I reached out also to Mr. Lawrence Oles, who's president for the Westbury Home Home Association, just to get, let them know we're getting ready to do some, some major renovation work in our Westbury rental properties. And they both gave back positive response in reference to that. And they was happy to see that we were looking at to make sure that we continue to maintain those properties so that they will be, people will want to move into them when they, when they are maintained very well. That was an old business item. The, the other thing would be, I, I'm hoping that in October, we can do what I call the board retreat, whether that be virtual or whether that be, will we come together sometime in October? Maybe we need to do a day, a full day of a board retreat so that we can kind of set some, some goals and objective for, at least for 2022 and some short-range goals, what is long-range goals. So I would ask you to look at your calendars in October and maybe if you could shoot me two or three different dates that will work for you for maybe a one-day board retreat that we could do. And we probably could have a facilitator come in to help us to, to kind of move that along. If you can kind of put that on your calendar, really appreciate it. The other thing was, we had a little dialogue in reference to our scholarship. Normally we have that during the, the year. We have a big reunion with that. I'm going to ask Delos Adam to kind of bring us up to date on that. Delos?
Good evening, everyone. How you doing today? Yeah, we just recently met as a scholarship committee. Our scholarship applications closed last week and we had eight applicants to apply. Only five of them met the guidelines, eligibility guidelines and had completed, submitted completed applications. Of that five, we have three new applicants, two high school students and one adult. And then we have two returning applicants. One was a graduate, graduating senior from last year. So they're applying for their second year and they move into the adult category. And one is a senior resident, one of our elderly residents that's had returned to ODU. She's getting, working on her bachelor's degree. And so she's a returning student also. And we have, we met as a committee and we will award the two high school students $1,500 each. And the three remaining applicants will get $1,000, will get $1,000 each. We have, we are still in the process of collecting funds for this scholarship year. So it's not too late to donate. So far, I always put that plug in. So far, we have raised, we have our scholarship. We've raised this year close to about 4,000, a little over $4,000. So we are looking to raise a whole lot more because we have, there's still a lot of need. And we are, we are not going to do our scholarship brunch this year due to COVID. We're all putting a pin in our hopes on 2022. We feel 2022 is the year that we're going to get back to doing what we love doing and celebrating our residents that receive our scholarship.
Thank you.
Okay. And also to add to that, I've reached out to the local golf courses here, Bottleweed and Elizabeth Manor. And both are open to us maybe trying to do a golf scholarship golf outing in 2022. We're going to put that down because in this area here, you have a lot of golfers that will play in these with type, particularly events. And it would be a way that we can showcase the Portsmouth Redevelopment Housing Authority. So we're going to be working very hard to put that together for 2022, a scholarship golf outing. So I'm hoping that all of you, all of you as board members will pull your clubs out and start practicing now for, for 2022.
I'm just going to hit a bird. I can tell you that now.
That's all I have.
All right, sir. All right. Before we, let me just make the comment here about public speakers. PRHA allows up to five minutes for public speakers. Are there any public speakers that wish to say anything? All right, given there's none, I want to go around the table here and see if there's any, oh, by the ways, from anybody before we go into closed session. Councilman Battle, since you're our liaison there, sir, was there anything you wanted to bring up from your side of the house?
Well, there's several things that I'm going to bring up. But I'll first of all bring them up in the meetings that Mr. Director and I are going to have. And then I'll bring them to the board. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Let me go around the room, I guess. Mr. Barham, have you got anything, sir?
No, sir. No others further at this time.
Thanks, sir. Ms. Cos?
None at this time.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you, ma'am. And we don't see you, but I hear you. Commissioner Jiggetts? Commissioner Jiggetts?
Yes, I just want to remind the commissioners and staff, per Zoom etiquette, make sure you're well-lit so that the viewing public can see you. Two of you, I'm not able to see at all. And I mean, I get it, but that's Zoom protocol to make sure it's well-lit in your area so that you can be seen. And, and I'm directing this to staff and to our fellow commissioners. Thank you.
Ms. Jiggetts, you're, you're a blur right now, so.
Yeah, we can't see you at all.
Well, I'm up in the corner above.
No, we still can't see your face.
There's nothing out there for colors.
The little icon for video is blocking me. Not me doing it, but some kind of way it's blocking me. But I'm well-lit.
No, you're not visible at all.
It's because of the video recording icon that's. It's because of the video recording icon that's covering me. So whoever's working it, Warren, can you do something with that?
I don't know, I can see you.
I could see you too.
Yeah, I know, those.
It depends.
And, and I am well-lit.
It's all completely dependent on how, how the application is operating that day, I mean.
Commissioner, Commissioner Prince, any comments, sir?
I just wanted to ask Mr. Bland if he has narrowed down a timeframe for the open house, and thank you for everybody for being here.
Oh, we're looking at probably open house at Lexington, obviously probably in, in June, we'll get a better feel for the COVID situation, how many folks I think we can have there at one time, so probably June or no later than July for open house.
Thank you, sir.
Thanks, that's great. Ms. Wicks?
Um, no, I have nothing at this time.
Thank you, ma'am, thank you. And Vice Chair?
No comments right now, thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. All right, with that, we're going to go, let me read the resolution to bring us into a closed session. Whereas the Resolution 2021-13, whereas the Virginia Freedom of Information Act provides that the Board of Commissioners can meet in a closed meeting for the discussion of the disposition of publicly held real property, where discussion in an open meeting would adversely affect the bargain position or negotiating strategy of the public body set forth in Section 2.23711A3 of the Code of Virginia is amended. The matters for discussion are the Hearsh Shelter and the disposition of properties located in Portsmouth Downtown District and Prentice Park, so there'll be three discussion items. Now therefore be it resolved in compliance with the Virginia Freedom of Information Act and the above cross-reference section of the Virginia Code, the Board of Commissioners shall reconvene in a closed meeting on April 15th, 2021, for the discussion, for the discussion of the disposition of real properties pursuant to Virginia Code Section 2.23711A3. So with that, we need a, I need a motion, and I need a second.
I make a motion that we move into closed session.
Second.
Thanks, Vice Chair. Ms. Marshall?
Commissioner Barham?
Yes.
Commissioner Cost?
Yes.
Commissioner Jiggetts?
Yes.
Commissioner Prince? Commissioner Prince?
You're muted.
Aye.
Commissioner Wicks?
Yes.
Vice Chair Roberts?
Yes.
Chair LaLondi?
Yes, thank you very much. All right, we'll all log off the meeting and then come back on into the, the closed session, we'll give everybody a couple of minutes. Thank you.
Does everybody have the link? Does everybody have the link for closed session?